Okay, thanks everyone. It is 7:00 PM, July 2nd, 2016, city council meeting. Get this going, go in for storm calls. Recommend groups and individuals. Debbie?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to speak?
Is it, oh, is that the same time?
Now's the time to do it.
Okay, just real quick, I just want to go over a few things because Councilwoman Copeland and Councilwoman Williamson asked Larry Green before made some comments about the KSP. If you guys decide to do that, just some highlights of things you might want to consider if you end up doing that. I would make sure about the length of the contract and if there's any penalty, if you pull out ahead of time because that might be an issue with the funding. What's their 911 backup procedure? I would assume that they would reroute their calls to another jurisdiction, but you just need to know that ahead of time. Radio backup procedure, same thing, radios go down, you have storms, what's their backup? And does answering the city's 911 calls include the city police admin phone lines? Because right now we answer those after hours on the weekends and holidays, so that they, and the lobby phone, PD lobby phone. So you just need to make sure that they don't, that you switch those lines if you end up going that way. This is a big one here. The annual amount of money that KSP will receive for your 911 calls. Every month, every quarter, we get two payments from CMRS, which is your wireless monies. One is a pro-rata amount and one is a volume amount, it's two different amounts. The pro-rata amount, from my understanding, is what you all would, what KSP would be eligible to, to collect. And it should be, right now we get between 19,000 and 20,000 according for that. So based on your size, I would say the low side, you probably get 10,000 a quarter, which will be another 40,000 a year, or the high side will be 60,000. But that money will go to KSP. So your $157,000 that you're going to pay does not include that pro-rata amount, so you'd be up back around 200,000, just so you know. But you'll need to contact CMRS in Frankfurt, y'all need that number, I give it for you. The contract that you'll have with KSP will include your NCIC invalidation function, that's a big, that's a big deal, get that added. What's the associated cost for officers to have NRI CAD, which I believe is what KSP has, and the map on their MDT? Because they're going to have to buy those licenses, you just have to find out what that cost is. Everybody's different, every CAD company's different. What about the officers having NRI CAD's records management system? Captain Manning and I talked a little bit about some of this the other day through an email. Because they have records management, RMS, they have that now with Spelman, they'll need to continue that with a new CAD regardless of what CAD it is. So you need to get a cost on that. That's to put your citations and the other data, the run data in there. And will they have connectivity to view the CAD data? Because sometimes they, if they're at the station or whatever, they want to go into the computer and see what pass name files and things like that. Let me know when three minutes are up, because I'm going as quick as I can. The fire department, Chief did not talk a little bit about rip and run reports. Ask them if they have rip and run reports. I didn't know that it helped in ISO ratings, but Chief Walker just told me that it did. Our new CAD does have rip and run included in it, just so you know. If it does, if you do have to have a third-party vendor, you need to find out who that is because you know what the expense is. Since KSP uses their own mapping program, how often are the map updates provided? Right now with the new CAD, we get 12 updates a year included in our costs, that's one a month. With David Evans and what he's been doing, which by the way is a side note, he's really great, does really well. You'll need to make sure that they can update that map because we've got new addresses, new address points coming all the time. And what attributes are included in the map? The new map that we've got, a lot of the help really from David. It drills all the way down so I can get an address point, type in your name and it'll come back, or type in the address and it'll come back with the person that lives there. That's pretty significant, we've never had that before. This new CAD, the map also, it routes you, once you select what units you're going to send on the run, you can right-click on that and it'll show you the most direct route, right-click on it again and it'll give you turn-by-turn directions, much like a Google map would. So just ask them, make sure you have that.
Debbie, it's been four.
Oh crap.
None of the trials, the council would like to continue.
Okay, the only, okay. The only other thing I really wrote on here, oh, and also we added the aerial view now to this map. David brought that over for me yesterday and that's being added to this map as well. What that means is that you can actually, this really works well for fire. It would work well for you on an active shooter, you know, because you can actually see, but it really works well on fire because you actually see the structure. So, and those things would be available on the, via the MDT, the map and everything for the officers. Just make sure you don't, you know, you get every, get your bang for your buck, you know, get what you can. The only other thing, and I think somebody asked this of Larry Green last week about the weather sirens. That came to my mind today because of the weather, obviously, this is a time of year for that. So just make sure that they have the capability or how much it's going to cost to set off those sirens. And that's all right. I'm sorry I took too much time. A lot of information.
If you have a list of data, if you'll share it with me again, I appreciate it.
Sure, yeah, I've got it saved. You just want to keep that copy or I can email it to you later, which I once found.
Fine, thanks.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, anyone else?
I have a question. The cable upgrade, is it still going on? The 300,000 where it was, depending on the, several months ago?
Mr. Salmons, just for input, if you've got a question, you can call the city hall.
Oh, okay, well, okay.
Would you like to give us a call?
Yeah, I'll call, whatever I have to do, I'm just wondering about it.
Anyone else? We've received input from the public, something. We'll go to number three, bids, contracts, and proposals. We have A, we have B, fire apparatus bid proposal, and I'll entertain a motion regarding the fire apparatus purchase.
I have a question.
I'll work, I'll need a motion first, then we'll get into the discussion.
What do you need a motion, they need motion for what?
To, yeah, to accept, to accept, it's not, you're not actually going to.
I'd like, I'd like some questions before we put the motion on the floor, because I'm just five minutes looking at this. Matter of fact, we're all tabled, just five minutes just looking at this and, and on to put it into records, Clark. I just had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, the typically what we do is we have a, a motion, a second, then discussion, and then if people want to table that or.
I think we should table. I make a motion that we tabled, because I haven't had time, I have many questions related to this apparatus and I just looked at it. I'll put a motion on the floor to table it.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Those opposed?
No.
Somebody's got to vote. One way or the other. Opposed, 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 you got three opposed. Roland Williams?
I stand.
I'm standing.
Because with the storm, we're going to, it failed.
If motions fail, we're going to discuss, let's move forward on this.
We have to have a motion to discuss.
Let's have a motion. I make a motion, we approve the low bid of 746,398 dollars for the ladder truck.
Seconded by Councilman Buckman.
Now discussion.
Now discussion. So Mayor, does this mean that we're getting ready to buy it or we're just accepting the bid?
Except the bid, you buy.
Now we're in the discussion part of it.
My understanding of this fire truck was in the long-term planning, we've already voted on this for the fire department, this has been in the budget the last three budget, money's been appropriated for this fire truck and been accumulated, and now we're right here at the point of buying it. It was moved forward a year for the, because we went to an independent fire system here and this is, this is in the long-term plans to buy this fire truck. And now we're, all of a sudden it's like it's new news.
Uh, Councilman Buckman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I have my rights.
I'm just making my statement, Mr. Williams. I ain't done. And the way I understand this, it's been in the long-term planning for three, before I ever got here, that this money's been appropriated and was the project of buying this new truck. Okay, Mr. Williams.
I have some questions for the chief.
Yes, sir.
Since I had a chance, I haven't had a chance to review it, but give me a few minutes.
Okay.
This 109-foot, this is a 109-foot ladder.
Yes, sir.
Here in Borstown, 105-foot ladder will reach any building in Borstown, a height of eight, eight stories. What reason do we need a 109-foot ladder?
Well, all the manufacturers that bid, bid 107-foot or taller, because that's how they manufacture them.
But it's higher, 109-foot is more expensive.
No, it's not, it's not even more expensive, actually it's the least expensive if you look at the bids. The 109-foot is less expensive than 107-foot.
Okay. And my next question, is this truck, I mean, give me a minute, is this truck stripped? I mean, is it stripped or all you have to do with it?
Oh, we have to do.
It comes in stripped.
It comes in with no equipment except for ground ladders and some what we call hand tools. The, as I said at the last meeting, we will take all the equipment off the existing ladder truck and put it on this truck, so we don't have to go out and buy any additional equipment like hose and nozzles and things of that nature.
So a truck that is 20 years old, you can use no parts over 2016?
As long as they pass their test, and they do.
I mean, I mean.
We, we test the hose, the hose that tested every year, and if it doesn't pass its test, it has to be taken out of service. So we test the hose every year, we test the ladders every year, everything has to be tested. And as long as this meeting is test parameters, then it's still good to use.
And my next question, I have a warranty. Is a new truck, cutting out the piece of tire, it's also hoping none don't happen to it, but if something happened to it, would you have to drive it all the way from me? Where is this, where is this located?
The, the service center for the low bidder is located in Louisville, but he has a fixed garage, but he also has a mobile service unit, so he can come on-site to do any warranty work that would need to be done. Short of something catastrophic, then we have to go back to the factory.
That's why they say something major.
But that goes for any fire truck, yes. Anything major would have to go.
If something major happened to it, who pays, will they pay for the freight, ship it back to the local?
Yes, it would be incoming upon them because it's warranty work. Yeah, they, they are warranting the truck for that amount of time.
And it's not in detail, wet and dry? I mean, what's, what's wet and what's dry?
Wet means when you.
I don't know what it means, but I mean, it, it's not in detail here.
It's in the specifications, if you want to, if you want to sit here and read these specifications, you're more than welcome to.
No, I'll just, I'll just ask a couple simple questions. Wet, what weight is it wet, how many dry?
It's seven, well, that depends on the angle it starts out.
I know.
Uh, just a second, I'll get you there.
Dry and what's wet?
Just a second, I'll get you there.
Okay.
It is, if the weight load is evenly distributed, it's 750 pounds.
Right, 750, what is wet?
That is wet.
Oh, it is wet.
And, and dry, it starts out at 1,000 pounds and then depending on the angle.
Right.
The, the load decreases, because now you're not pushing down the back of the front of your, so it's the strength of the ladder. But it starts out at 1,000 and goes to 750.
Right, and you're not using water out of it.
No, if you're using water, you'd be at 750, up or at an angle.
What would you do, what reason why would you do water? Would you, would you rescue somebody?
You wouldn't, that's, but if you, if you have a downtown building on fire, you want an elevated string.
Right, I know what that is.
So that's the difference.
Okay.
If it's wet, because water weighs 8.33 pounds per gallon, when you charge that water weight, that lowers the strength of the ladder because now you've got to add the weight of water.
Okay. That's the name of, that's the product of the truck is, is that a 2016?
Yes, it's a Rosenmauer, is the brand. It's manufactured in South Dakota, I believe is the manufacturer.
Have we ever owned one of those before?
We have not, no. We own Seagrave and Pierce.
I know Seagrave, I know them. But you don't have, you haven't been.
Seagrave didn't put a bid in.
Oh, they put a bid.
They did not, Seagrave did not put a bid in. Pierce did, Pierce's ladder truck we have now is a Pierce.
Right.
And Pierce put a bid in, they're the next bidder on scale.
Right.
But they were at, with discounts about 830.
So that's 746,398 delivered?
Yes, that's complete.
And you will change necessary facilities and, oh, are you taking off the 20-year-old truck and you're putting it on it?
Right, it's more than 20, it's actually.
I know, I have.
It's a 1988 model.
I have concern with that, you know. Okay. If I had more time, I would have more questions, but that's all I could ask you at the present. Okay.
Councilman Simpson?
How long does this bid stand?
Uh, just a second, I'll tell you, Councilman. 30 days from the date he submitted, which was last Tuesday the 3rd. And let me put a caveat on that, the reason he was able to get the price of this truck that low is the truck is in production and it's on the market, so anybody can buy it. So for example, if, if we, if y'all chose not to vote to table tonight, say, well, let's wait till the next meeting, and XYZ fire department sees the truck on the market and they buy it, then that truck is gone. That's the only one they have that's in production.
And the price, the price that that one made?
Oh, it'll go a hundred thousand dollars, because that's what the other bids, you can see what they're at. That's the reason we got a good deal on the price on this, for one of the reasons we got a good deal on the price is because it's already in production. They were building it to go around and shove like to other fire departments.
Well, I see in, the thing you can see is we're in budget time.
A lot of things.
We're in budget, and I see where you've got a $600,000 truck in next, this year.
Well, that's, that's a request, yes, sir.
Yeah. I see that, and I'd like to know where we stand on that relating.
Sure.
To this truck. Will this ladder truck we got now, will it suffice for the pumper truck?
No, no.
It don't have.
Well, we don't have any place to keep it, is the biggest problem, because we only have two apparatus bays that will fit the ladder truck in it. And we were about the ladder truck we have now, and then the other one's got a smaller ladder on it, the 50-foot. And they take up those two end bays closest to Broadway. So if, if we kept the ladder truck, which I would love to keep it, we'd still have to equip it, but we also have to have some place to put it, because we're out of room as far as height-wise. We're in a severe height restriction, you know, because the other bays, we're going to go about nine foot and 10 inches, nine foot, eight inches, something like that.
Well, of the two trucks, in your opinion, which one do we need to work? Which one do we need?
I think the ladder truck only because the age and safety requirements on the other ladder truck we have now, it's a 1988 model, and just this fiscal year alone, we've spent $9,000 just in repair work to it. And that, that can go up, so every time it gets tested, we have to do work on what's called torque box, which is the mechanism that helps the aerial operator.
And you indicated when we were talking about this the other night, is that this one is going to market for sale?
That would.
Our old.
Old because we don't have any place to put it, yes.
Okay. But how can we sell something unsafe to somebody else? If it's that unsafe for us?
It would be probably most utilized by a fire department that was wanting just the elevated string part of it and not the rescue. For example, if they've got warehouses or something of that nature where there's not a rescue situation, it's more to get a nozzle up above where the building fires would be at. So it's still, it's still a good truck for that purpose. Uh, it's just if we have a rescue situation, if we have an apartment, you know, second floor on Third Street, and the fire's on the ground floor in one of the mercantile establishments, then we have a real problem, especially when we've only got four to five people initially on the call, we'll have volunteers coming in behind that, obviously. So getting that truck there and getting it set up quickly is important, but to, to answer your question, I see, and some departments would buy that truck just to get the ISO points, because just having ladder trucks sitting there, they're going to get some ISO credit for it.
Well, I didn't think the truck would help us set puts in eyes, or even we bought the truck.
No, the new one, and the one we have now, the new one, we won't see any difference in points because we're replacing one truck with another truck, it's just a newer, safer truck. The one we have now, we're not going to garner any more ISO credit by buying a new truck with this paper truck. It's going to be the same amount of ISO credit for us or any other community for that matter. For us, it's about the age of the apparatus and the state of the apparatus. It might be.
Councilman Williams, on the floor.
Yes, sir.
So the, the truck that's in production is not being held for us, is what you're saying?
That's correct. Unless, if y'all were to take a vote tonight, for example, the vendor I talked to on the phone today, he said if, if, you know, Barbara would send a, just an email, and then know that y'all took the vote and said we're going to buy this truck, then they will hold the truck even without a cash deposit. But, and he said without a letter of commitment, the factory wants to sell the truck, obviously. So if anybody else comes along and says, hey, we can save a hundred thousand dollars buying this truck, then it's, it's fair game.
Okay. And, and I don't want to speak for Bobby, but I'm kind of thinking, well, I'll put this, well, I'll speak for me. Okay. Between a ladder truck.
Yes, sir.
And a pumper truck, which one of those two are we most likely to use the most?
Well, in, in this instance, because we're going to staff the ladder truck, we're going to use it on every fire call that we have. The, the truck we have now, the crews that we have don't want to run it on a daily basis because they don't think, because the age is going to hold up under that kind of stress. As far as the ladder truck itself, when I looked at it, because we have two pumper trucks, and ISO recommended we have three because of our pumping capacity requirements, we still get the pumping capacity for the two trucks we have, so we're deficient in that arrangement, but we're gaining far more credit by keeping a ladder truck in service than getting another fire engine as far as the point value is concerned. As far as the use of the truck, that's the reason we specified that it had a pump, a tank of water, the aerial ladder, and also ground ladders like you would climb to paint a house, for example. That way it's what we call a multifunctional piece of equipment. And for a town of our size, I think that is in the best interest, because that way when the crew that's on duty responds to any call, they have every tool they need at their disposal on that one truck. Once again, we could do the same thing with the ADAC model, but most of the crew that we have working at the fire department feels like it will not hold up to that kind of use.
Is our current ISO rating a five?
That is correct.
And what will we need to take it down?
I'm working on, and I hope to have that to you, if not the end of this week, the first next week, and I took Councilman Copeland's suggestion, and that was to draw up a strategic plan for the fire department. And I've laid out in there a good bit about the ISO portion as to what we would need to do to improve on the ISO score. There's, there's three segments of that, dispatch, the fire department, and our water supply, or fire hydrants, that's our.
Is it water pressure or water supply?
Well, it's actually how much water in gallons per minute we can get from the hydrant. Because they will look at a building like Spalding Hall, and they will have a formula that'll say you need 5,000 gallons a minute to suppress the fire if that building were on fire. So they'll start looking at fire hydrants if they were within 1,000 feet of Spalding Hall, and if this one's 1,000, this one's 1,200, and they start adding it up to see if you have 5,000 gallons or not available. And if you don't, then this one, your score starts tanking. So I talked to Larry Hamilton the other day, there's some things we can do with the budget process coming up that we can discuss at the safety committee to try and enhance the water part of it, but from the fire part, that's the only part I can really, I would say control, but manage. And of that, the, the big parts of the fire department obviously are staffing, how we train our staff, and the apparatus that we have available to respond to a call. That's what they look at for us. And that's, that's very concise of a big thing, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, you on the floor. Councilman Williams, go ahead.
I have a couple more questions. Pounds, pound capacity, pounds per minute, if I'm saying it right.
A ton?
Yes.
Yes, 2,000 gallons.
2,000, what about your foam tank?
The foam tank is a 20-gallon foam tank.
20-gallon?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that old truck got a bigger foam tank.
No, it has no foam tank.
It don't have no foam tank?
No, sir. And that's the advantage to having this new truck with all the still research, produce all the alcohol that we had in storage.
Right.
This will give us at least the initial capabilities with foam to start a small fire. Obviously, a big fire like we had at Heaven Hill years ago, there's not enough foam in Nelson County to put that kind of fire out. So, but if we get there quick enough on a small fire, then we could at least apply a small portion that we would carry onboard. Part of the specifications required for what they call a proportioning system, and basically where the pump is, it's a big mixer, and it takes the foam and the water, mixes it together, and then sends it out through the fire hose or the nozzle at the end of the ladder.
My last question.
Yes, sir.
How high is this truck?
Yes, sir. Are you, do you remember offhand?
I don't, sir.
I think it was 11 feet.
11 feet?
It was, it was over 11 feet, like 11 six.
You've got a 109-foot ladder and 11-foot, oh my God, you're up on cloud nine.
Well, and that's the same height as the ladder we have now.
Oh, uh-huh.
It's the same height as the ladder truck we have now, yes, sir. You know, they're the same height.
That'd be 120 feet.
It's pretty much the same height and length.
And I thought the standard was 100 feet. It was dangerous if you go over 100 feet outside.
No, there's no standard. Matter of fact, this company makes ones 210 feet. I, I don't want to climb it either, trust me. I don't want to climb a 109, which is 210. Yes, sir.
First of all, remind us something, I might tell you a personal story about a bourbon warehouse getting on fire. Just some, some thoughts about the budget, we, our, our job is to set the budget, we put this money in the budget last year to buy a piece of equipment. At the time it was a pumper truck, but not being a fireman, that's one you hear there and me. The chief has made a decision and his staff to, instead of buying a pumper truck, we should buy a ladder truck. The money's in the budget, I'm, I'm not a fireman, I don't propose to be a fireman or to question the chief or his staff on what, I mean, we have to eventually trust our people who run these departments know what they want, so I'm, I made the motion to approve it, I think it's something that I would do.
Thank you.
Well, what you have to remember too is, is I was there many times, like, since you've been there, when a company come in and has worked on this truck, it is a safety issue. What'd you say, you get to the end of that ladder, you hand them a bottle of water?
Send them on back, wish them well.
Wish them well, but it's a, it's a safety issue. Councilman Simpson, do you have something?
I got another question.
Yes, sir.
This truck will fit in this?
Yes, it's pretty much same size as the ladder truck we have now.
Will fit?
Yes, height and length, yes. It's a tandem axle, which is the same we have right now. Actually, maybe just a little bit shorter, but not much.
I have one more, just one question. The, back to the ladder truck or the pumper truck? So we know that you, you want the ladder truck and, and you need the ladder truck, but the pumper truck is coming back up? And it's not that it's here or, you know, one or the other, it's that you need both of them?
It's not that we need it, it is what is recommended from the ISO standard. So I guess that does mean we need it when I say we need it. As far as operationally, we operate with what we have, but from an ISO standpoint, they recommend that we have, without going into too much, now I'll, I'll get you that, that plan out that we, I was talking about earlier, but basically they want us to be[1725.56] to be able to produce 3,500 gallons per minute pumping capacity. And with the trucks we have now, we can't do that. So, we would need to buy a newer apparatus that has a bigger pumping capacity.
A new one, or could we get-
We could get a used one, yes, ma'am. If, if we can find one that will fit.
Because I'm just thinking about how-
Oh, I agree.
...restructure the fire department and the cost that, you know, it's on us, you know, to make sure that that's-
That's an excellent point, because we didn't bring up about selling the existing ladder truck and what we have in there we would generate from that potentially to put towards the purchase of a good use truck, provided it will fit within the parameters of type that were restricted. You can look online, and there's hundreds of fire trucks for sale, but very few are short enough to fit in those end bays, um, furthest away from, you know, closest to, to sacred ground.
We definitely need trucks that go into-
Yes, ma'am. I agree. So, but I, I think that's, I think that's something that we could diligently search out. The other thing is, if we get through the budget process and the money is there, I'm not so sure it would even be, if it's a new truck, a pumper truck I'm talking about, I'm not so certain that by the time we wrote specifications and put it out for bid, a new truck, because this one's in production, a new truck built from the ground up takes anywhere from nine months to a year. That could actually put us into the next fiscal year, depending on how long it takes to go through the specification and bid process. So, there's a, there's a possibility that we would need to put in funding in the upcoming budget, but we might be able to find a good deal like we did here as far as price-wise.
So, this one come out of line item, huh?
That line item is not, what we got in that line item is not particularly for a truck, it's for equipment, right?
It was, uh, 731.
Yes, but that was technical equipment.
Well, that's how it was budgeted-
Yeah, but it didn't specify a truck, but it just said equipment.
Right, because the-
Right.
The original plan was buy a truck and equip with the new equipment.
Right.
And we're going to not, we're going to reuse the equipment that's on the existing truck. I understand, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just would specify and not have just got some pump capacity.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chase, I have one more question, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
Um, if we vote to, uh, purchase this truck, when's the, when would the delivery date be?
Uh, in his business, he put from the date we agreed to buy it, it would be, uh, it works from 120 to 150 days because it's in production, so probably July, August, maybe September at the latest. I bet that's just a prediction. I actually have pictures of it, I should have emailed them out, but, where is that in production? The guy sends to the committee, and by the way, not to take more time than this, or but Corey and Stan, Ernie and Chris, and we had a couple other guys that were on the apparat-, they, there were five of these books they had to read through in a week to deduce what is in there to see if it fit the needs. So, I, I appreciate the work that they did to get us to that point, too.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, to approve the fire apparatus proposal from Rosenbauer. It's the 109-foot Viper aerial ladder truck. Uh, we have a first and second.
I have seconds.
You already got a second? We had, uh, just got all in favor? Those opposed?
No.
Probably not in here, yours.
Uh, no.
No?
Thank you.
Motion's adopted, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, we'll do the E-Number one dispatch, the, uh, the council group there, and, uh, Councilman Williams, you have a question?
Yes, I called a clerk and had to put it on the agenda. At our work session, Roland, I mean, Councilman William and I, I mean, Councilman Simpson and I would like to sit in on negotiating the 911, and also, we had some more recommendations. Councilman Roland Williams had a concept, and Councilman Fred Hagan had a concept. If we can compile all this together, then try to negotiate, I'll appreciate it.
Okay, uh, uh, Judge Dean Watts?
Yes.
We have talked, we're going to meet one-on-one first, that'll be next week, and then I will go from there.
I mean, are we willing?
Yes, we're willing, but Dean and I will meet first, one-on-one, that is his request, his request, and I will abide by that, and justice, as he's, by, by mind to meet one-on-one on different occasions, so, and after that, I'll give you the report.
Okay.
Okay?
So, it'll come back for the council, but, okay.
All right. We go to see with the sewer inspection bid tab, and, uh, if you guys look at that, I'll entertain a motion regarding the sewer inspection bid. We don't like stepping backwards, do we?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd see, uh, okay, Mayor, I'll make a, a motion. We approve the, uh, bid from First Response Environmental Group for $33,987 for the camera cleaning man home inspection.
Now, second. Number first, and we have a second discussion.
Larry, you want to just walk us through a little bit?
Well, basically, we're, we're, uh, they clean and then tell us, and the system we're doing is the oldest system. It goes from South Fourth on North to about the railroad tracks, so second, fourth, fifth, and across, the sewer flows south from the north end this way, south, and it comes together on John Fitch and goes down forth to the sewer line and up the railroad. So, it's the very oldest part of our system that's clay pipe, that was laid in about 1930, and we'll see.
Is this just a continuation of the work we've been doing for the last four or five years?
Yes, yes, sir.
And Councilman Hagan, I think you said 33,987, the total, I think it's 46,707 and 10 cents.
A1 has a number four.
How did you do that?
In the comma, I had-
Yeah, it's 46,707.
Yeah, in the bolded box is the total bid amounts from the bidders, at 46,707.
I was just, I was just here to make a school. Okay, well, now, if I may, if I may modify my motion to the amount of 36,707 and 10 cents.
Do you have a second?
I, I have a second, that's all right, okay.
And Larry, just one other question. This is, but this is the, the cleaning and the camera, and then any repairs will be on top of that, which there's usually some-
No, I sure, um, they, they just clean and tell us, and they give us a report of DVD, then, then we go through that, and we all go through that to see, and then we decide we'll have a repair, whether it's a point repair or whatever. So, uh, next is, it's just, uh, gives us that photographic record, and so, the bidders, uh, Pipe Eyes and Robinson have bid here, we've not, we checked on First Response, they're out of Tennessee, and they're helping us in Paducah. Their bid looks good, and we have no reason not to accept it, and they're, they have insurance and bonds and so on, so, uh, and we get a product, and we don't like the product, I guess we didn't, wouldn't have to pay them, so really, it's all very little risk. So, uh, so we then do recommend that well better. It was a good-looking bid.
Right. In the past, we, we have used Pipe Eyes, uh, we use them, uh, I think when we first started this, four, five years ago. It's, uh, it's amazing to see that, if you get a chance, and you see that truck, stop in, watch them, they, you can watch their camera. It's, uh, pretty amazing what they do, and they cut tree roots, and, and they tell us everything, you can see the, the dips and everything, it's amazing.
Doesn't it, uh, help us to find leaps and things that we can to the sewer?
We hope, but if there's a fracture, and maybe, uh, what sometimes you'll see is, uh, this time of the year, like today or month, you'll see holes inside of the cracked clay pipe and infiltration or inflow into that pipe. Uh, so, that's what we then decide, uh, we did that on Fifth Street here some years ago, and we were totally replaced from the school board down to City Hall, uh, or down to Broadway, because it just need, it was torn up. So, uh, here we will learn on the older part of our system what must be replaced, and hopefully, we can, uh, keep it off, maybe we won't find anything.
What you have to understand, that all this water that gets into the system and goes to the sewer line, it has to be treated, and it does cost us any money to treat that extra groundwater that gets in there, so. Taking photographs and, and looking at it is just not the, the only thing, we just don't stop from there, we have to repair. Any further questions? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for 46,707 dollars and 10 cents from, uh, from the environmental group in Goodwoodville, Tennessee.
First response.
First response, so all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's adopted, thank you, guys. Let's move on to, uh, the HRB, DRB, planning zone recommendations. Uh, we have the DRV 230, the BFM LLC, and I'll entertain a motion regarding the DRV 230.
Could I read that?
Yes, absolutely.
DRV 230 VR, VFM LLC proposes to, uh, construct a 100-foot by 180-foot distribution facility on Glenwood Drive, revised lot number seven, in the CGB Industrial Park. The Development Review Board met and reviewed the site, building, landscaping, and lighting plans, and recommended approval of that submitted building, site, landscaping, and lighting plans with the conditions specified in the DRV minutes.
Need a motion, please? I need to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept DRV 230, uh, as read, with the recommendations-
Recommendations for planning zone. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, the councilman, thank you.
I have a question.
Discussion?
Uh, excuse my ignorance, but what is, uh, VFM? I'm sorry, I didn't get it, I didn't see it, um, what kind of company, I mean, what do the letters stand for?
We can only go by what's on the application.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I have a safe question.
Oh, okay. I mean, it's not a deal, but I was just curious.
No, I didn't, I never seen it, so I'd be honest, I don't know. Okay, we have a motion, uh, we have a first and second motion to approve the DRV 230. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion's adopted. Correspondents, if there's no objections, I will adopt a motion to approve the fireworks special permit for the Development Base Foundation. Okay, motion is, is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you. Review of the minutes, if there's no objection, we'll adopt a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, April the 26th, 2016, and May the 3rd, 2016. Okay? Motion's approved, administered by unanimous consent. Uh, you have, uh, no financials, and we have an ordinance, uh, no first readings, and second reading. Barbie, would you please present the second reading, please?
Ordinance B 2016-03, and ordinance exempting Thai Summit America Corporation from all city real property taxes for a period of five years from the time that manufacturing activities begin. Whereas Thai Summit America Corporation will locate in the Nelson County Industrial Park, and whereas KRS 92.300, Chapter One, or, excuse me, Subsection One allows home rural cities in the Commonwealth of Kentucky to exempt manufacturing establishments from city taxation for a period not exceeding five years. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City of Bardstown, Kentucky, that Thai Summit America Incorporated, a manufacturing establishment, be exempted from all city real property taxes for a period of five years from the time that manufacturing activities begin. This ordinance shall be in full force of effect following publication as required by law.
Can I ask a question before we make the motion?
Sure.
I should have brought this up before, and I apologize for it. The, the second, uh, ordinance we have discusses, uh, company remaining in the community for 10 years after startup, which is the, the general ordinance we're getting ready to pass, but we don't mention the 10 years in this ordinance with Thai America. Is that something we should have done? Since we're passing an ordinance, and I, again, I apologize, I thought about this last week, and it just slipped my mind until now. We're, we're passing an ordinance for this company that's going to be in conflict with the general ordinance we're about to pass.
That, that is true. Uh, when we were looking at the overall ordinance, we were setting out outer parameters and, you know, for that very reason, for this very reason, so that we're uniform and, and, um...
I guess here, here's a question, while you're-
We, we could go, we could go back and have another first reading, uh, but-
Well, if we, if we did, I don't think that's going to hold them up in any way. I, I guess, I should let you finish your, actually, my question.
Well, I, I, my understanding is, is that, that it needed to go quickly, that's why it didn't wait for the overall, is my understanding, that, that they're, they are proceeding post haste, I mean, we're talking about they'll be in production-
Let me, uh, I'm sorry, but in this, in this talk with, with that group, uh, they were at the table, and it was, and Larry was, was, uh, was part of some of this discussion, is, is, Tim was exactly right, it was, they have to get building now, and they have to be in production and start that factory within 90 days, and from the time of the, before the heat was dried, this ship left from Taiwan, it was, had the equipment on it, so, it, that's-
Okay.
Do you want to go back to do it, or?
I, if, if we had time, I'd rather do it over, but I, again, I should have brought it up before, I'm not going to hold it up for that.
I should have brought that, too, that's, that's, but I think that, uh, with the amount of investment that we're talking about here, I don't think we have to worry about them leaving the community like some can.
Well, you know, uh, not only did the company buy some of the lots, but, uh, then the family, I think, bought a few-
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, I feel comfortable with you being on, if you just-
... Audible.com, Audible. Audio, wherever you are. Reony Books presents-
All right.
... Bridge Recording.
We know what Lady Green is doing.
That be of the case, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number B 2016-03.
I'll second that.
Uh, motion on the floor to approve B 2016-03, have a motion on the floor, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, and individual vote, uh, opposed.
Thank you.
Councilman Copeland?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
All right.
B.
Thank you. Ordinance B 2016-04, and ordinance establishing exemptions to manufacturing establishments from city taxation for a period not exceeding five years as an inducement to their location in the City of Bardstown. Whereas on April 28th, 2015, through ordinance B 2015-04, the City Council repealed in its entirety the original ordinance that offered tax exemptions for manufacturing establishments. And whereas the City Council agreed that future offerings would be applied on a case-by-case basis, and whereas the City Council wishes to establish the parameters for the initiatives that may be offered. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City of Bardstown, Kentucky, that the City Council may, by ordinance, obey real and/or tangible property taxes for a period up to five years to induce manufacturing establishments to locate within the city, per Kentucky Riots Revised Statute 92.300, Subsection One. The company must agree to remain in the community for a period of up to 10 years after its startup, or alternatively, to repay a pro-rata share of these incentives based upon the duration of the company's location in the community within that period. The company, in order to qualify for the exemptions above, must be adding at a minimum 25 full-time jobs as certified by the Bardstown Industrial Development Corporation, BIDC. This ordinance shall be in full force in effect following publication as required by law.
I'll entertain the motion. Councilman Williams? Okay, uh, I move to approve ordinance number B 2016-04, as read, and I yield the floor for a second.
Seven.
Second, Mr. Copeland. Discussion? Okay. Motion's on the floor to, uh, to approve, uh, B 2016-04, the overall city tax exemption. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm, I'm sorry, individual, sorry.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion's adopted, thanks. Uh, reports on the staff and the committees, uh, I guess there'd be a cemetery committee meeting scheduled for 5/11/2016, uh, at 8:30 at City Hall, and, uh, just, Bobby, you got the floor?
Yes, um, I had a chance to hand out to the, to the council, um, a situation that's been coming up in several of the city clerk trainings that I've been attending regarding social media, especially all social media, which represents Twitter, and Facebook, and LinkedIn, and a lot of other situations that you may find yourself-
and a lot of other situations that you may find yourself a part of. We need to establish an overall policy, not only for employees, but for the legislative body, in order to accomplish not only how to utilize, utilize social media, but also how to retain the records. A retention schedule that follows, as indicated on my email from the Kentucky Department of Library and Archives, that retention schedule follows the same as an email. So I had a chance to put in your packets how the sequence of determining email retention follows, so please understand that we already have email policy, but we need to also include social media policy. So I'd like very much for you to look at the proposed social media policy for cities that was given to me by KDLA, and see if this is something that you will help me to implement through a municipal order, and become part of our personnel policy for employees, as well as an overall legislative policy.
Can, and from this, can the police department have, I know Captain Madden that was working on, but will this go for everyone, or each, each department, or can the, say, police or fire make an add to this?
The policy itself can be, can be individualized, if you want it to specify, if you would like to, but the retention schedule, you don't get a choice on that.
Right.
I'm sorry, I have a cramp in my leg, I have to stand up. So that's where it differs. Just the retention schedule has to be followed, but the actual policy itself certainly can be individualized if it's necessary, because of the department itself, and what's received.
And I think that once we get this going, and as you say, we're not, we're not small town America, really, and the social media, I agree, it's going to be the downfall of us if we're not careful, but the police department, fire department has been working on theirs for an individual impact for their departments. It has to be, I think it has to be a little tighter, so I think it's something that has been a long time needed.
City Attorney, have you had time to review this? You as a city attorney, we do not have one city attorney in the House, have you had time to review this?
I've been looking through this, and I know there's been some concerns, and hopefully, you know, this is a time where I'm going to reverse the rules. I hope that Randy can talk to his, his contacts and see, but I believe that, from what this is saying here, in the, from the Department of Libraries and Archives, that when conducting analysis of social media content, the following non-exhaustive list of questions can assist agencies, is the agency, and I think the agency is broadly interpreted as individuals or as a collective, are they directly communicating with the public through the use of social media? And then it says if the answer to the above questions is yes, it's likely that the record should be captured and preserved. And it's similar in my discussions with Barbie, it's similar to email. You know, I use my personal email account to email you all, and that's subject to open records requests, it has to be captured and preserved, so...
I don't think they're wanting your pictures of your cakes that you put on there, or your snow, like the white dogs, it's just the emails and the remarks that are made, and I think that's all a part of it.
As I indicated, we do not have one city attorney in the House, and I will take your recommendation, City Attorney, no one else, because we are not attorneys, and you the only attorney in the House. And I think you should review this and make a recommendation.
I appreciate the confidence that you've shown, and I will, I am, I am working on this, you know, I'm a little old school, and it's hard for me to believe that it's...
I'm an old school house, too, okay.
Yeah, that is, that we have to give up some level of freedom.
Right.
But that's the waters in which we swim now. But I, yes, I am reviewing this and hope to get some responses. I know Councilman Copeland is, she's indicating to me that she sent off a request, I think to the Attorney General's Office.
And their request was for elections, for some reason.
The Board of Elections?
The Hall, and they answered, and gave me a full explanation, and I'm like, really? I'm like, why? I don't know if someone was real, or you, or what, but that's what they said, so I gave them all the information, I gave them the examples that Barbie had sent to me, explained in that, that their city council, they made comments on their city council Facebook page, and they were sued. So I gave them both scenarios, and they were like, that's not what we would deal with. So, I don't know.
I'm still looking into that, I think that, again, when you, my position would be at this point, subject to change.
Right, sure.
Would be that if you are, as an elected official, or as city employees using a personal email account, or personal Facebook account to discuss city business, that I believe that the media would, would consider that open records and subject to their, to a request, and because of that, then we have to capture that data. I think that's the important thing that Barbie's saying, is we, we have to, we have to have that so that we can respond to an open records request. There's part of that that, honestly, that a little bit offends my sensibilities, but I'm trying to keep an open mind.
I have a question. So are we saying that, I know the Clerks Association has had many meetings on this, are you just saying local government? Because when I spoke with many, you know, state representatives, they use personal and their, their business, their professional page, so are we, is that something that's going to open up on all levels, or just local?
I would assume it would open up on all levels.
Well, the presentation that I went to recently was through the Lincoln Trail Area Development District, and it was given by Amy Brazenhever with the Attorney General's Office, and Trace Kirkwood with the Kentucky Department of Library and Archives, and their interpretation of social media is on, on any public agency, government agency, that houses, and that's including, you know, the legislative body and the employees. So we have to be very careful on both, both sides of that, as far as capturing the data, and keeping it for the two years that's defined, or having the opportunity to get rid of it as soon as it happens. So we, we just have to be familiar with it, but also establish a policy that gives you the opportunity to disclaim that the comments that are made by the public on your Facebook page, on your councilman Facebook page, may not be those that you represent, may not be your opinions. So, but until we have the policy in place, you can't make that disclaimer. We have to put it in, in a policy. And that's what they're suggesting. Yes, sir?
Just kind of walk me through this, let's say Randy puts in a, and don't do this, by the way, but Randy puts in a request, the open records request, to have access to my email. What does that require of me? Does that require, did I give you my password?
That requires you to print out for me those records.
If it's anything personal, me emailing my wife, tell her to be safe, that's...
That can be redacted, huh?
Yes, that's not, that's not...
My question, I have two accounts, one for city, one for personal, so you wouldn't be going into my personal email, right? It'd be city only, right? You understand what I'm saying?
If you're discussing city business on your personal, then it's, it's...
If the city business on my personal?
Yeah.
What do you mean city business?
If you are discussing matters related to the city, you can't use your personal to hide, you know?
I can't talk to my constituents, I mean...
No, no, that's...
Not on your personal one.
So you should, you should, the moral of the story, as far as I can see, is that segregate, you know? Personal is personal, and city is city, and talk about city on city, and personal on personal. Yeah, it offends my sensibilities, too.
I'll debate that through the law, because with personal and city, you cannot subpoena my personal. I went through, I have been through this with attorney, and my personal, my personal, nobody can go into my personal.
Well, here's a situation you come up with, Mr. Lydian. Let's say you have a personal account, and you send out some information to a constituent about a city matter.
Yeah.
All right, that constituent comes to the city and says, well, I just got this from, from Councilman Lydian. Then I would, and if it ever came into an open records, I would have to show that this record came into my possession, and it was produced from your personal email.
I was a bit misled when I had those two set up.
Well, it's, it's, it's the shining the light of day on the business of the City of Bardstown is what it is, and if, if we could say one thing on the city website, depend on personal, under the cloak of confidentiality, say one...
Sure, I'm going to be confidential.
That's, that's where, that's where it comes down, but again, you heard me say, it offends a little bit of my sensibilities.
I'll debate that, I'll have to hire me a good attorney for that, okay?
No problem.
All right, no problem.
Can I, can I say, Councilman Lydian? So on your Facebook page, on your professional page, you have privacy settings, so you can make sure that no one can send things to your professional page, and that's, that's the way you would set that up, so that way you're in total control of that page. Anything on that page is because you put it on there, no one can send anything to you. On your personal page, however, I mean, you also have those same settings, if you want to do that, where no one can send anything to you.
Right.
But, you know, if you want to do that, I'm more than willing to help you, but, you know, that's a, that's one way to make sure no one's posting on your page.
Okay. Barbie, what were, you're asking us now is to review this and...
For a policy.
Yep.
Please.
And when the, the fire, I know, again, I know the fire and the police are working on theirs, will that have to be approved by the council, or they're just departmental policies?
It should go through municipal order for approval by the council, it really should.
Because I know theirs is probably going to be a little stricter.
I would suggest that.
Yeah. Y'all get together, bring back, give them a water on your...
You would take it to the committee first?
I would take it to the safety committee, and let them, and just tell them this is what you want, because you've, chief, you've been through this with the departments that you've gone through, you've had it, so...
And I would just explain the differences, where you'd be going over and above, or different than the general policy, so that you don't have to...
Most of the time I reference the city policy in, in there, but ours are more stringent a lot of times.
Right, and I, so is the police, so again, I agree. Take it to the safety committee, if you don't mind, Councilman Butler, chairman. Any other scheduled committee meetings?
Yeah, we have a wastewater, water and wastewater meeting on Thursday at 5:00.
It's coming Thursday?
It's coming Thursday.
I was at a street committee, hopefully next week on either Monday or Thursday, or Wednesday, we still can't get it on the, Monday or Wednesday.
You just pick, just pick one, make it, make it happen. Okay? What do you, get to the new business, Barbie, can you read the resolution, please?
Just as a summary on the resolution, R 2016-03, it's an opportunity to authorize the mayor of Bardstown to proclaim May as Historic Preservation Month in the City of Bardstown.
Do you need a motion? Do you want me to read it?
Well, I summarized it, if you'd like for me to read it in full, I certainly can, but I just...
Not necessarily, I make a motion to approve resolution R 2016-03.
A second, thank you.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion's adopted, thanks. Barbie, if you want to read B, the M 2016-7, the Buttermilk Close in the Streets?
This is a municipal order that's presented each and every year, this one is M 2016-07, Buttermilk Days for 2016. A municipal order authorizing the closing of South Third Street, starting at the entrance of St. Monica's parking lot to McGee Street on Thursday, August 25th, 2016, at noon, and reopened on Sunday, August 28th, 2016, at 5:00 p.m., for Buttermilk Days 2016. A no-through traffic barricade will be placed at the corner of South Third Street and Payne Street to facilitate the smooth flow of traffic. There will be no parking allowed on Payne Street on Friday, August the 26th, 2016, at noon, through Sunday, August the 28th, 2016.
Councilman Simpson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve municipal order, M 2016-7.
Second.
As read.
First and second discussion, of course, that'll be with Captain McKenzie, make sure everything is followed, the rules were followed, everything is done, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Motion, along the floor to adopt R 2016-...
M.
I'm sorry, M 2016-07, Buttermilk Closing of Streets. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion's adopted, thanks. Okay, now we're down to number 12, the City Council members' comments. Councilman Simpson?
We got a cemetery committee meeting tomorrow morning, all look like pretty good agendas, so come prepared for a while.
Councilman Butler? Councilman Williams?
Those vehicles we have parked by the Justice Center, are those our property? Which ones, the military-looking ones?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
I know Dean has one of them moved, but we're in the process of maybe getting rid of two of them, we have to keep them for a year, and then the other, there's, we may keep two, correct me, continue to come on, but there may be two we may keep, and if they are, they are actually going to be painted black, and those vehicles have been used by the Sheriff's Department more than has been the city police.
Well, that wasn't my question, my question was, do we own them, number one?
It's been here?
Not yet.
And, yeah, and the other one was, it just, this looked like we came in and mobilized or something, because they were there.
Well, they actually, they did mobilize, Sheriff did mobilize when the Crystal Rogers went missing, they did mobilize, and I said they used them, they used them during the snow, the police department got nurses, and a doctor, and teachers, and, yeah.
And they were free.
And it was free. Nope. So if we decide to keep the two, Captain Manning and I discussed maybe painting them black.
Councilman Haye?
Yeah, I may have already mentioned this, but Keisha and I went to the Kentucky Cities Academy a couple weeks ago, I mentioned it already.
She sent us emails.
Okay, yeah, just that we, speaking for both of us, we learned a lot. Keisha went all three days, I went two days, and we're putting together a report on some of the stuff we learned, and some of the questions we brought back, and it was really, really a meeting informative, three days. And last Monday, I went to the Kentucky Stormwater Association meeting in Lisbeth Town with Larry and Jessica, talking about the permitting process for redoing our permit on stormwater, another interesting, somewhat technical discussion, but we learned a lot, and so, that's it.
Councilman Lydian?
Probably on South Sixth Street, they said they would like to have a speed sign, South Sixth Street, speed sign, because I know, oh, I'm lying, where I lived, they got a speed sign, could we put a speed sign on South Sixth Street?
Well, normally we, we don't, and Larry wants to address that, we don't put the speed signs on individuals, but we also don't put slow children playing, we don't put those signs.
I know, so, but they just want a speed sign, what about that?
Well, Larry? If it's unposted in town, what, it's 35 miles an hour? And I guess that's enforceable?
Yes.
So are you, if, I said just like, they want it reduced, or they just want 35 miles an hour?
Speed limit sign in their neighborhood, speed limit sign.
35 miles an hour?
Well, that's fantastic.
It's hard to go 35 on that street safely.
If it's 35, I'll take them. And if it's 70, they're off the way to 35. Could you do that?
I could.
Let me, let me, let me ask you this, what about if we set that machine up, and we'll get an average of what their speed's going through there?
No problem.
We'll set the machine up.
Okay.
If you want me to, I'll take 30 seconds to say what I would recommend. What the chief just, or mayor just said, we take speeds, get some valid speeds to see. An highway department recommends 85% of the people are going 35 or less, you leave alone. If they're going slower, let's say 25, you may want to post it as 25.
Okay.
So after having the data, we can talk about it and see what is needed.
No problem. I'll move it.
Now, you know, by posting that little machine out there, the kids are going to run it to see how fast they can get to it.
Problem, so, we try some, okay.
Usually the 95% of the speed to neighborhoods like they've lived there, so...
So I'll tell the property, maybe some progress.
Counselor McCollum?
Very good.
Cemetery deeds, if there's no objections, adopt a motion to approve cemetery deeds for Robert Struf, is that it?
Yes.
Patsy Blackburn, and Jack Graves. Okay. Since there's no objections, the motion is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, there's no city employee anniversaries, and if there's no objection, adopt a motion to adjourn. Are you unanimous?
Yes.
Adopted. Motion's adjourned, thank you.